Okay, I want to welcome everybody to the January 28th, 2020 Regular Town Council Meeting, and also the Local Planning Agency Hearing. Meeting called for 6:00 PM. I'm going to officially call the Local Planning Hearing. Meeting called to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Singer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bernstein.
Here.
Councilmember Luskin.
Here.
Councilmember Mendel.
Here.
Councilmember Einstein.
Okay, under the Local Planning Agency Hearing Meeting we're about to enter. It's regarding adoption of an ordinance amending the Land Development Regulation. An ordinance of the Town Council amending the Towns Code, Chapter 46, Section 46.85, Height of the Seawall and the Docks, and Extension of Decks and Docks.
An ordinance of the Town of Golden Beach, Florida, amending the Towns Code of Ordinances by amending Article 4 of Chapter 46 entitled Waterways, Section 46-85, Height of Seawalls and Docks and Extensions of Decks of Docks, to allow the deck of a dock to be constructed at the minimum seawall height of 3.425 NADD-88, or at maximum seawall height of 4.425 NADD-88, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, and providing an effective date.
Before we go on, I need a roll call, please, on the agency here.
Mayor Singer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bernstein.
Here.
Councilmember Luskin.
Here.
Councilmember Mendel.
Here.
Councilmember Einstein.
Okay, I need a second on the...
What? Mayor, members of the council, as you're required to...
I need a second on the adoption. Second?
No, we didn't say...
Meeting adjourned.
It's actually a... You're not actually adopting it. You will at the regular meeting, but what you're doing is...
I need that it's consistent.
Right. So there should be a motion to find this consistent with the comprehensive plan and to adopt it as the Town Council when it comes up to motioning. Find it consistent and recommend adoption.
Second.
Good.
Mayor, after reviewing the ordinance that's being considered tonight at the Town Council meeting, the Director of Planning, which is Miller, finds that this is consistent with our comp plan. It is not in conflict, and we recommend favorable rule.
Perfect. All in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? Okay, with that, we're going to close the Local Planning Agency.
I do want to say one thing. So this year, we will be doing our first comp plan review. The last time we adopted the comp plan was almost seven years ago. So at the end of the year, we're going to ask the council... Or mid-year, we're going to ask the council to appoint a comp plan committee, to make our donations to the board for its consideration. So just keep that in mind that that's going to happen this year.
Can I have something to relay to... So the fact that we had certain applicants coming in...
That's going to be during council meeting. We'll talk about that at the council meeting.
We'll get that.
So with that, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn the Local Planning Agency. I need a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, with that, we'll adjourn that meeting and move on to the Regular Town Council Meeting. Regular Town Council Meeting was called for January 28th, 2020, timed 6:00 PM. It's approximately 6:07 PM. Meeting officially called to order. A roll call, please, for the Regular Council Meeting.
Mayor Singer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bernstein.
Here.
Councilmember Luskin.
Here.
Councilmember Mendel.
Here.
Councilmember Einstein.
If we could all please rise. And Chief, can you lead us into Pledge of Allegiance? And everyone, please raise a flag and repeat after me. Place allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to welcome everybody to the first meeting of 2020. I really appreciate everyone coming. We've got a few things on the agenda, but first, I'd like to recognize and like to show our appreciation for the members of the 5K Committee. So that, I think this year was the fourth year that we've done it. Fourth year that we've done it, and I believe we had how many participants? Seventy-five participants. It's grown pretty good every year. And I think this last route we did on A1A was probably one of the best routes. We got great participation. The Police Department did a phenomenal job, Chief coordinated it, and the town staff did a great job coordinating it. So with that, we have some appreciation, certificates of appreciation. If you could come up here. James Allen. Stay up here while I give these out. Sergeant Julio Soca.
Put all our pluses to them, please. Thank you.
David Long. He doesn't get a certificate. Lydia Eskenazi. We're still running. Kurt McCoy. David Block. And Alan Wilson. So we can get a picture with everybody?
This is Alan.
You make...
Here we go. Ready? Here we go. One, two, three. And one more.
So how much money did we end up raising?
We typically donate to the Best Buddies approximately $2,000 every year. And I just want to say that, you know, this year's event was great. We moved the location to Ocean Boulevard last minute. I think that both the participants and our residents really enjoyed it because they were able to use their driveways without having to wait for the runners. We had a great team of employees. We even had the Miami-Dade College Police Academy cadets come out and run with our members. Every year, the Police Department does a great job. Leila, I know that you were the first host, and now Julio, you're taking over. But this really is a resident-driven event. Our staff plays a very little supportive role. And so thank you to our residents for putting it together. We look forward to next year's...
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, with that, we have an award presentation for the Golden Beach...
We need to prolong that. Ms. Tally is currently on her way back on the Lehman Causeway, so we can remove to the next one.
Come back to that. Next is the swearing-in of our new police officer, Kristen Ricono. If you could just get to the front. If you could come up here. Officer Ricono is 21-years-old and was born in Havana, Cuba. He studied and graduated from John Ferguson Senior High School. His hobbies include practicing judicacy and suspending time with his family. Since his childhood, he's always wanted to become a police officer. And last year, the Town of Golden Beach sponsored him to attend the Police Academy, making his dream a reality. Officer Ricono graduated from the City of Miami Police Academy, winning the Physical Fitness Award in his class. After graduating from the academy, he was hired by the Town of Golden Beach as a part-time officer. We welcome Officer Ricono to the Golden Beach Police Department. So if you could raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Mr. Ricono.
You solemnly swear?
I solemnly swear.
That I am entitled to hold the office?
That I am entitled to hold the office.
Which I am appointed?
Which I am appointed.
And that I will support, protect, and defend?
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and the government?
The Constitution and the government.
Of the United States and the State of Florida?
The United States and the State of Florida.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith.
Loyalty?
Loyalty.
And allegiance?
And allegiance.
To the same?
To the same.
And that will faithfully, without fear or favor?
Without fear or...
Perform all duties of a police officer?
Perform all duties of a police officer.
Of the Town of Golden Beach?
Town of Golden Beach.
Of which I'm about to enter. So help me guide.
Which I'm about to enter.
On my honor?
On my honor.
I will never betray my badge?
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity?
My integrity.
My character?
My character.
For my public trust?
For my public trust.
I will always have the courage?
Always have the courage.
To hold myself and others accountable?
To hold myself and others accountable.
For my actions?
For my actions.
And I will always uphold the Constitution?
Always uphold the Constitution.
The community of Golden Beach?
The community of Golden Beach.
And the agency I serve?
The agency I serve.
Congratulations.
Mayor, will we take some pictures? Destiny. One, you know, Officer Ricono.
Congratulations.
One more. You know, it's important for our residents to always get to know our police officers, especially when we first hire them. The bond between residents and officers is what makes Golden Beach unique. And so we have a policy of community policing here in Golden Beach. Our officers should know our residents. Our residents should know our officers. As you know, back in 2008, when I... Soon after I was hired, I decided to start the part-time program by sending young individuals to the police academy, giving them their foot in the door to become law enforcement professionals. Since that time, GIO is working on getting me a number, but we've sent over seven, at least over seven, part-timers to the academy, and most of which have stayed here. The three traders, I mean, friends that left the Doral enjoy it there, but we... This program allows two things. One, it allows us to have more eyes and foot on the ground, more police officers patrolling our streets at night, helping us with our events, helping the community involvement. It also allows our senior officers, our full-time officers, to take their vacations, to be with their families, to enjoy their time off, without creating a burden on the town's finances. Our part-time officers are treated differently than our full-time officers. And so we currently have five part-timers working in the system, and we hope to continue to grow that. We have currently one cadet in the academy, and we have three in the pipeline to go to the next academy. So our program is successful. Congratulations to Chief Fabello, Lieutenant Diaz, and Lieutenant Perez for the hard work that they do, and congratulations to all the men and women that serve Golden Beach. Continue to make us proud. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, next is motion to set the agenda. Addition...
We're ready to go back to presentations. We have two presentations to do, so...
It's not on my agenda. The two presentations are youth... Youth leadership.
Good evening, everybody. I am Marie Tally. I am the Community Development Specialist here. And every year, we take part in several of the programs, basically the Florida League of Cities that acknowledges things, great things, that cities and towns are doing in the State of Florida. And so this year, we got recognized for our Golden Beach Youth Leadership Group, right? It is about intergenerational civic engagement. And the project that I submitted shows all of the great work that the Golden Beach Youth Leadership Group has done over the years, as far as fundraising, community service, keeping the beaches clean. And so, as a result of their great work, and... Okay, there was a slide presentation.
You can do it.
Okay. You sure?
Yeah.
All right.
Go for it.
So if you'll watch the board. All right, so we presented, and this was in the category of intergenerational civic engagement. So we gave a little history of the town, its incorporation, and how it was historically rich and famous would come to stay in Golden Beach. And then, the... Over the last 10, 15 years, the demographics has changed. So when I came to work here in 2008, I'm sorry, 2006, there were a lot of snowbirds that were only here six months out the year. Over the last 10, 15 years, though, we got more families raising children that are here all year long. And so as a result, we had to change how we provided services to our residents. And with the then-Vice Mayor, Judy Luskin, we got together, we put together the Golden Beach Youth Leadership Group. And this was to allow the kids to have an opportunity to be a part of the town administration, to give them opportunities to get community service hours, which they need for graduation, and to teach them how to be leaders. Okay, what happened to my slide? Oh, there they are. All right. And so you see where they have received scholarships and recognition for the work that they have been doing. Also, they also take part in our annual Memorial Day and Veterans Day programs, which honors our veterans. They've also done work with Fishing with America's Finest, which is a nonprofit that provides fishing therapy for veterans who suffer from PTSD. And a lot of this, as I was doing the research, I learned, because I didn't realize that they were as active as they are in the things that they've done. How many remember the first... Reenacting the first council meeting? Yeah. Right? The Golden Beach Youth Leadership Group got together and reenacted the first council meeting, which was held June 20th, 1928. The funds that they raised from this went to help St. Jude's Children's Research Hospital. They also did other fundraising events, like for the earthquake in Haiti back in 2010. Now, we had a couple of young ladies who were part of the group. They had put together Proceed the Green, which was an environmental awareness program, which taught the residents about recycling and about green stuff. And of course, green, you're right, green stuff. And of course, the youth are really active in keeping the beaches clean. Somebody said because it's technically their backyard, they feel responsible for keeping the beaches clean. And pretty much, that was the presentation. Those were the officers of, as of 2019. The core objectives of this group is to develop concerned citizens, develop strong social and moral responsibility, promote active citizenry, develop positive traits like self-discipline, provide opportunities for success, and to build self-confidence, provide non-traditional opportunities for learning, and to develop a lifelong habit of community involvement. So to everyone, I present the Golden Beach Youth Leadership Group. All right?
Before you present the award, I just want to make sure, because I think I don't want to lose sight of this. So we competed with all the other cities in the State of Florida and submitted our organization for consideration. And Marie, what occurred? Marie went to Clearwater to represent the town and to see if we were going to be successful or not. And Marie, what happened that day?
Well, we received honorable mention for intergenerational civic engagement, right? Which means we kind of like came to second place, right? The first-place winner was... Let me get this right. An organization called Generations United out of Deerfield, out of Deerfield. And they won, so they won the first-place prize. And we... Now, I came away feeling some kind of way, right? Because all I did was submit the project. I actually don't even work with the Youth Leadership Group, right? But we received this award, right? Which is really a beautiful award, but it has my name on it.
That's funny.
And all I did was submit the project, right? So I felt kind of bad, because I thought that if anybody's name should be on it, it would be Councilwoman Luskin and Michael Green, who asked me to approach it. But it reads, "The 2019 Part of Civic Excellence Award, Intergenerational Civic Engagement, Honorable Mention, Golden Beach Youth Leadership Group, Town of Golden Beach, been under..."
Who represented us?
So great work, guys. Keep it up, right? Because we are getting lucky.
What's important to remember is out of the 412 cities in the State of Florida, the comment number two as honorable mention is a great testament to the work that our youth in Golden Beach are doing. Although we are a small community, our youth are extremely involved. I wish one day, somebody would put together the list of accolades of what all of our youth do, the schools that they go to, their SAT scores, all their awards. We know...
Their SAT scores?
We know how competitive Golden Beach is. And I can tell you that as a city manager, it makes me very proud. And in fact, I get teary-eyed when I think about all the great things that we do as a community, because sometimes we get forgotten about because we're so small. And this year, I'm proud to announce that we're taking a group of Golden Beach Youth Leadership Group, probably 20 of them, to Colorado to compete with the All-America City Award. And it's going to be a great experience. We will be competing against 4,000 cities from across the US to become an All-America City. The mayor has already approved that award for us to go after that, and so we're looking really forward to that trip. And so let's see if we can win that award also.
Town manager is going to be the chaperone.
I'm going.
With pride.
Okay. Just take a minute. We have some of the members of the Golden Beach Youth Leadership Group here. I'd like each one of you to stand up, state your name, and, you know...
And your SAT score.
You want to start? Daniel? That would be the community garden that we had such an argument about.
I love it. I go by it almost every day.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
So the last thing I want to say is...
One more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, because it's hard when you live in a community like this, because everyone, just all you guys go to different schools. So if you didn't have something like that, you probably wouldn't know each other that much.
Interestingly enough, not enough of the students in Golden Beach even know each other.
Right.
So this is one way to bring them together, and...
Well, I commend you guys. You guys did a great job.
You've been great, and we encourage everyone at home that's listening in to please get involved with the Golden Beach Youth Leadership Group. We know that we have meetings, and it's oftentimes, depending on your school schedule, it's hard for you to get there, but we do a lot by email. And we manage to make it work and get at least four or five fundraisers done through the year. They help with Veterans Day, Memorial Day. And it's a great program, and thank you all for being part of it.
Thanks, guys.
Final comment is that everybody that was at the summit was really, really impressed with the work that you all are doing. So I wanted to bring that back to you.
Thank you for going, Marie, too. Thank you.
All right?
Congratulations.
Thanks, guys. Mayor, please. And also have to thank, like I said, Councilwoman Luskin, because she's really, from day one, taken the Leadership Group and started it and formulated to what it is today. So thank you.
Mayor, before we go on, it's... I'm usually late in compensating you for your annual compensation. We tend to wait till the January meeting, so I will briefly remind our residents, our mayor and city council, our volunteer positions that get paid $1 a year for their years of service. And each year, we try to give them a small token of our appreciation to acknowledge the hard work they do on behalf of our residents.
Kids can enter career and enter office.
But we do have just a small token of our appreciation. If staff can come and help me, since I'm opening these upside down. This year, what we've decided to do is give you a token to memorialize the 90 years of service that we've had in Golden Beach. So we won't open all of them, but just to give you an example, this is the mayor's. It's a small plaque that says, "Mayor Singer, with this annual compensation for his service and dedication to the residents of Golden Beach." And so we have the 90th Anniversary logo, the year that you were elected to office, the number of years in office, which for Mayor Singer is 18 years. And Mayor, Mayor, you've earned $18 throughout the last 18 years. Congratulations.
But it takes taxes on that.
And the year that we are celebrating with a beautiful Golden Beach shot glass, which will hold your actual... Where is it? Somebody click me. If I have trouble.
If you ever mess up.
Dollar. So this is your compensation for the year. We want to say thank you.
One for our age.
For your service. And again, on behalf of the residents of the Town of Golden Beach, we know that it goes without saying, we appreciate the hard work that you guys provide to us year in and year out. And per the charter, consider yourself compensated. We'll have the staff pass these out to everyone, and then we'll take a picture. But we won't delay the meetings.
Thank you, town manager. You're very kind.
And so the idea is that every year, you'll get your new dollar to keep in your shot glass, and then we'll change the year for the award. So this way, you have one professional. Councilman Einstein has had 19 years on the city council. He's been paid $19.
Who's that been?
Councilwoman Mendel, you have actually been on the council for three years.
You're not going to Vegas with that? Well, my interest is you're paying us later.
So you've compensated $3 for your service to the Town of Golden Beach.
It's really nice, Alex. Now my box.
Councilwoman Luskin, you have been on the city council now for 15 years. So throughout the last 15 years, you've received your $15 in compensation.
Oh, wow. Thank you.
And I'm not going to set them all up, because that would take forever. And last but not least, Councilman, 13 years on the city council. So I think that the council deserves a round of applause for your... And staff, if we can have them just stand with their gifts and send a quick picture for the newsreader, so we can keep our residents informed.
Come on, Judy.
Will that work?
Yeah, will that work? Thank you. Staff will pass out the... And Mayor, I know that I seem to be rushing it, because I want to not hold the residents up. But again, on behalf of our residents, the youth, and everyone that serves in our community, we thank you guys for your vision. We know that this year, we have a lot planned for our community. Over the last 10 years, actually, over the last 13 years, through your vision, you've invested over $45 million in our community that our residents have only had to pay $14 million for. That speaks volumes to the leadership that you provide. So thank you for your hard work. Kids, it's a school night. You don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. It could get kind of boring, but you're more than welcome to stay. But if you'd like to excuse yourselves, this is the time to do so, if you want to do so.
Thank you, guys. Okay, moving right along. Thanks, guys. Good luck at school.
Bye-bye.
Right, we'll move to motion to set agenda. Additions, deletions, removal of items from the consent agenda, and changes to the agenda. I have none. Counsel?
None.
Staff?
None.
Okay, moving right along. Move to good and welfare. Good and welfare. Anyone for good and welfare?
Yes.
Dr. Tartell?
Yeah.
640 North Avenue?
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to...
Just go over there.
I just wanted to address the council, the town staff tonight, to go over an event which may have been a once-in-a-generation event, but I think it elicited some flaws that we have here that need to be addressed. So hopefully, this never is an issue for possibly even more important events. In a nutshell, I don't know if you all recall that on the 23rd of December, we had a lot of flooding here. Actually, it was not an atypical type of rain. It certainly wasn't a tropical storm or anything worse than that. But at around 3:00 or so in the morning, my wife and I got an alert that Fort Lauderdale, Hollywood Fort Lauderdale Airport, was flooding. That was the alert. That was it. That's all we got. At around 7:00 to 7:30 in the morning, I was on my way driving to the hospital. And actually, the peripheral streets were pretty good. But as you got onto Golden Beach Drive, towards the mid-portion of Golden Beach, it was clearly flooding in the street. Hard to tell how deep it was. Me driving, you know, a low-level sedan, as I got sort of like, you know, 100 yards into it or so, my car started stalling out, and I realized that, oh, this isn't good. And at that point, I called the gate. It was, again, early morning, before everybody got in. It was after, as a weekend was ending. Spoke to the gatehouse. Spoke to the gatehouse. The gatehouse says, "Oh, yeah, we have flooding," but they opened up the north gate. Actually, they opened up the north gate as of midnight, which I thought was a very, very smart thing to do and show good judgment. The problem was, is that nobody else knew. Certainly, maybe that time, early in the morning, there wasn't any communication. There were no signs in the street, those A-frame signs or whatever signs, saying, "North Gate Open, Flooding," nothing. There were no police cars flanking the flooding area with their flashing lights. And most importantly, from my concern point, standpoint, is that we never got a blast-type of robocall or text that we typically get for numerous things, including things that are relatively trivial, like the barbecue or whatever event, or if there's a, you know, traffic on A1A or a closed-down, because I think recently, there was a shooting in Hallendale. And we, there were some things that we seemed to get, you know, alerts about, and other things that we don't. This was something that we should have gotten an alert about. It was certainly something that the officers, the safety officers, were aware of. They had the presence of mind to open the north gate, but nobody knew about it. There was nothing else to warn people. The officer did tell me, "Yeah, we put a notification on the lightboards." The problem is, is that the lightboards are really only for people who are entering the inland portion of Golden Beach or are leaving it, by which time it's a moot point anyway. When I spoke to people as office hours or business hours were starting, it seemed that nobody knew how to activate the alert system during off-hours, after-hours, weekend hours, holiday hours. And granted, I get, this could be a Murphy's Law-type of thing. It was 40 hours before Christmas Eve on a holiday week, but this is when things happen. And it was apparent to me that nobody really, really knew what to do in a situation like this. And there was a lot of shoulder shrugging. There were a lot of cars, including SUVs, that were stalled out on Golden Beach Drive. There were some officers that had to push them off to the side. This is something that needs to be addressed, and the reason I wanted this to be discussed in unison, not with me talking to one person here or one person there, is because I think we have to avoid the Tower of Babel effect, and I think we all need to be on board, recognize that this was an issue. This is an issue that could be emblematic of other issues. It should be easy to address, but it does need to be addressed, because if, God forbid, we... A message, a message... Out, even if it's when our senior people are on vacation, holiday, whatever, we need to have that ability. And I hope this can be the seed for addressing that.
Thank you. Anyone else for good and welfare?
Yes.
Appreciate it. Okay, moving right along. Move to mayor's report. Got a quick few comments. First of all, I just wanted to let everyone know, I'm very, very excited, as everyone's aware. The town received five bids for the town's new civic center. Now the bids are being reviewed by the review committee. They'll review them, rank the choices, and get back to us. But we are progressing as planned and nicely with the civic, new civic center. And we had a tremendous turnout for the project, which I'm very, very excited about. Second thing is, New Year's Eve event was a great event. I have to commend the town staff. The DJ did a great job. The decor was phenomenal. Residents looked great, and I know everyone had a really good time. I believe we had probably 400 people... You guys destined, you guys did a great job putting everything together, and it was really a fun party. It's nice for New Year's Eve that you really don't have to go anywhere. You stay in the community and enjoy it with your friends, family, and neighbors. So hats off to the staff, the party together, and everyone that attended. I'm sure everyone had a great time. I'm happy to announce that the town of Golden Beach kept its bond rating, which is big A, little a, too. That's a bond reading, and that's what has it been in the past. It shows that the town is financially strong. Especially for a town our size to get a rating like that is pretty much unheard of. So it just confirms the fact that the financial strength of the town of Golden Beach. And Finance Department, the town manager, and the staff has done a great job over the years controlling expenses and trying to maximize our revenue. So it shows with our financial strength. So that's a big plus to get that bond reading. And also, my last comment is on the Police Department. I have to commend Chief and your staff. You did an excellent job, especially in the fourth quarter. There were no major incidents, especially when there's no major incidents during the holiday season. That's good to hear. And commend everybody keeping the town safe and secure, and the waterways safe and secure. And regarding to your flooding issue and the communication, Dr. Tartell, I understand where you're coming from. I heard there was an incident that took place. I know the town manager wants to elaborate a little when he does on his report. But again, we try to inform the residents as best as possible, and obviously, it slipped through the cracks. There should have been some notifications, so we apologize and get to the bottom of it. But 99.99% of the time when there's an incident, the residents are properly notified. And I know the Police Department, the town administration knows how to handle every situation. And whether their town manager's in town, or I'm out of town, or LaCet's out of town, not one person pulls the string. So if there's ever an incident, you should feel confident that the notification will be, everyone will be properly notified. But again, apologize for your situation. With that, I'm going to move on to council comments. And first, I'll pass it on to Councilwoman Luskin.
I want to comment that since we did the milling and the paving of the streets, it really looks good. And much to my surprise, I didn't expect what a difference it would make when we started cleaning the curb. And that, the curbs and the valley gutters, that really toughed us really tough. So it's nothing we talked about at the council meeting, but it was part of your making sure that the town has really kept up and really made a very, very big difference, so thank you for that. Alex, I'm sure you'll give us a report on the dredging and how we're doing with that. I don't know if we talked about the tea party at the last meeting, but it was very successful. And thanks to Lee Benhamou for helping to make that happen. I don't think that anyone is going to look kindly about the suggestion that I have next month. The Iguana situation this year was so bad, and about a week ago, when it turned cold, I don't know if anyone else experienced it. They were literally dropping out of the trees onto the street. I thought they were dead, but they weren't. They were frozen. So I want to just mention, and I know that we leave it up to the responsibility of each homeowner, but when they're... Common areas, and there's no point asking one person to handle it if the neighbor next door is not. And then we had that fellow that came here into town and made a presentation all about the indigenous life of Iguanas. And like, I know everyone was sitting here saying, "Just tell us how to get rid of them." So, you know, I would suggest, and I'm not sure exactly what the right route is, but I think it's something that if it continues to be this bad, that we need to consider doing something town-wide. I don't want to say it's like...
If it freezes, and they freeze the town, and now fall on the trees.
There you go. That's a good idea. But listen, on the other hand, the fellow that was here said it was perfectly legal, and you nodded your head for residents to take air guns and shoot them.
It is.
Well, that's kind of creepy to have all these residents in town sitting in their backyard shooting air guns at these creatures, so I don't know. I have no idea. I thought I'd call you.
All right, guys, let's keep the meeting moving.
It was bad. Just one last thing, the FPL boxes that are along the lines of all the streets. Who services them and when?
FPL whenever they're needed.
Whenever they're needed, and who determines when it's needed?
They're all automated, so an alarm goes off at the substation at FPL off of I-95 and the Golden Gates Exchange. Then a box needs servicing, it's low on oil, it's overheating, the crew comes out, and then when it pops, it definitely sends out two alarms.
Okay.
Councilwoman Icese?
Yeah, my comment is, streets look terrific. Quick question, the yellow lines, I see that we got them up to like corners.
So all yellow lines are only at stop bars, and they go the length of two and a half cars at each stop bar.
In the past, they were...
In the past, we did not have yellow lines.
We had no yellow lines.
No yellow lines.
But it makes a big difference, doesn't it?
In terms of what?
Aesthetics, keeping people in order, showing you where your driving lane is, showing you where to stop, hoping that you don't run over kids or bicycles.
The streets look good.
Anything else? Councilman Parsons?
Thank you.
Thanks, Alex. Councilman, oh, I figured.
No, I'm just thinking about it, the gate, somewhat bigger issues. Not bigger, but I mean, just maybe certain things. I come in late every once in a while.
Once in a while?
When I come in late.
Alone or with somebody?
Just one night, like a couple, for a week, the gate wasn't going down, and so any... Which is coming into Golden Beach. Just in terms of, it happened like three nights.
It shouldn't happen. So when our gates don't operate properly at night, we put a stop sign on a horse thing, what is it called? And then we, so if that happened, we need to, we'll look at the video and make sure that does not happen.
I guess that just in terms of just following up with what Tartell said, just in terms of coming up with certain procedures in the event of no one's here, with the road shut down, you have some sort of kind of procedure.
I'm going to get that to my report, because we do have policies.
And I just thought beyond that, just different things that might go wrong with how this might go. You're not here when something... Because it was like a long week, and no one was in town.
You reminded me of something. Town manager, lights, landscape lights on the Strand, on the west side, on the west-north side have been out for... I'm sorry, Councilman Mendel?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so to Dr. Tartell's point, I was very frustrated that day as well. I spoke to the town manager quite a bit that day. I think it could have been handled much better. Completely in agreement with you. And as far as the notifications go, we've been having this discussion for quite a while, so I'm going to let him talk about it in the report, but I understand your frustration. The only thing I have to say is, I just really want to thank the selection committee that's going to meet tomorrow. I know they put in quite a bit of work over the last couple of weeks to put this civic center project forward. So really, just want to thank you guys for all the work and all the time, other than that.
All right, moving right along. We'll move to the town manager's report.
Mayor, manager, and residents, Dr. Tartell and others. Let me just start off with the issue on the December 23rd. So on December 23rd, at approximately 11:00 PM, the night before, water started coming down in Golden Beach, and it stopped. It did not stop. The entire South Florida community, from as far north as Jupiter Island to as far south as Key Largo, had flooding because of the issues. In Golden Beach, we have a system in place. The system calls that when we have flooding on Golden Beach Drive or any of our islands, we immediately open our gates, and we put out signs that indicate that our north gate and south gate is open. We do not call or do a robocall for flooding that is periodic flooding. Rain stops, our system, our pump system did work. Our pumps were draining at the capacity it's supposed to, and we had no rain coming down. Within 11 minutes of the last drop coming down, the entire street was dry. So if we were to do a robocall every time we had the flooding, when it occurred, we would have probably had that day 13 robocalls. So our signs are supposed to indicate to all of our residents that the north gate and the south gate is open. I do not know, and I apologize, why those signs did not go out timely. Those signs are supposed to, as we open a gate, they're supposed to be in the back of a police car, and they're supposed to be dropped off. Has nothing to do whether I'm on vacation, which, by the way, I was not on vacation. I was actually in South Florida, whether I'm here or not. But the robocall, we have to, we have to use proper judgment, because we'll say, "Streets are flooded," and within a couple of minutes, the streets aren't flooding. And so one of the things that we've been looking for through the years is how do we increase that communication? So we started adding those flipboards that you guys see throughout town. In fact, today, there's nine of them, indicating that tonight's meeting was at 6:00. This morning, at 7:30 AM, I text the staff to remind them that the signs typically read 7:00. We switch them and put a number 6 on them. So we've tried to use old-school systems to try to communicate to our residents. If you receive code red, you would have gotten a code red notification via text that there was weather and flooding. And I believe, Councilman Luskin, you got your text.
I did.
Indicating that there's flooding in the area. Those systems, you have to elect to be in, and we're going to help make sure that our residents are aware on how to get the selective text. Like, there's a code red for the agenda through the eBlast system. There's a code red for weather alerts for like rainy days. Now, could we do better? Yes. We've talked about through the years how we can put more signage in town. So in each of the islands, as you're coming off, maybe a small marquee, not as big as the one at the Strand, that would look ugly, not as big as the one here, that indicates, you know, go north or south. When we had the shooting, remember the shooting in December? We had the shoot, it wasn't our shooting. It happened in Golden Beach, but yeah, but it ended here. We did a code red, because the street was going to be closed for four hours. And so that was important for us to notify everyone. And so on that day, it would have been excellent if we could have just easily turned on the message board to say, "Arrow north, arrow south." So we are looking, so we are looking at those systems. We did fail you. Those boards, I call them sandwich boards, should have gone out to say, "North Gate Open, South Gate Open," and that's how we should have communicated. We could, we could agree to disagree, that we're never going to agree when a code red should be used. But do know that there is more than just two staff members that are certified to use the code red. Typically, it requires either my approval or the mayor's approval, because I agree that some of our residents say, "Well, why do we use it for the stupid sandwiches, but not for the flooding?" Well, we tend to use code red for events that we're going to lose money. So if we're paying $5,000 for an event, and we see that there's only 20 or 30 residents showing, we may do a code red to try to get people to participate, so we're not losing it. But that judgment caused, I'm never going to satisfy everyone, but we did fail you, because those boards should have gone out at midnight when we opened the gates. So we'll make sure that we look at why that communication failed. We'll look at ways to enhancing how we can do more digital messaging, and even maybe non-code red stuff. Maybe we could have done a text for those who signed up for weather-related texts. So we'll continue to expand. Mr. Glidden, who's in charge of our communications team, isn't here today. Communications team, team member one, just Michael. He'll be informed, but I apologize. And I know that in my email to you, I said, "Look, the system worked." What I meant about that was our stormwater system. I didn't realize that the issue was communication, so I apologize to you for that. But let's talk about the flooding, why it occurred. So tonight, you're going to be approving 13 fixes to our stormwater system to alleviate some of the occasional flooding that we're seeing on Golden Beach Drive. Remember, our system now is going on nine years old. It needs improvements. It needs enhancements. And so we're going to be working on that. On North Island, you'll be happy to learn that we're putting in a flat gate system to help alleviate some of the flooding that we get during the king tides. Southern Island, we have a pump station going in. But I got your message a lot in clear. We need to communicate better. We need to make sure that our residents are informed, irrespective of the hour of the day. So you get my commitment and the chief from directing me to make sure that our substation... Here's the other thing I want to also say. And I'm not, everyone knows that the buck stops with me, but sometimes our employees are overzealous to give information that they shouldn't even be opining on. And so you have a person at the substation who's nervous, who's getting a phone call, giving information that they may not be qualified to give information on, without knowing whether the systems are in place. So we'll do better training of our employees, but you get my, you get my commitment that we'll do better.
If I could just say, you know, when it down, use air on the side of sending a note.
Absolutely.
I don't think anybody would say, "Gee whiz, I wish I'd have received it."
You're right. You're right.
Alex, just one, if I'm listening, one maybe happy medium is, what if, just when you, when we open up the gate because of things like flooding, when we just send text messages to people on that side of the...
That's exactly what we're, that's exactly what we're going to be implementing, is a text system that you just get a message on the phone, an alert. Our code red system does send text notifications, so we can do that, and so we'll work on that. Same thing with our eBlast system. Our eBlast system will send you an email and a text, so we'll work on that, on both those things, and make it more robust. The issue is getting a robust system that we can use that doesn't overburden our residents. So we'll, we'll focus on that. I hear the council, and more importantly, I hear our residents, that that's what we need to do. Going on with our report, our dredging project is just about over. I know there's a lot of residents that don't understand what the scope of the dredging project was. Our dredging project was to dredge areas of our intercoastal waterways and our canals that did not have four feet of clear draft at low tide. I'm happy to report that not only did we get four feet of clear draft at low tide, in most of our canals, we get six feet of clear draft at low tide, with the exception of maybe one or two spots on Southern Island. In addition to that, we also did some rock removal that makes the north... In addition to that, we also did some rock removal that makes the north side of North Island Channel more navigable. That project is, is, uh, just about over. We're just fencing two or three areas and we're gonna then restore the lot that we use. And thank you to the resident of North Parkway who allowed us to use their lot for the can- the canal dredging project. If you see, when you have your vessel in the water, that your debt finder does not show you four feet clear draft at low tide, please let me know. We can always bring our crews back to kinda do more maintenance dredging. Um, and if you have a vessel that requires more than four feet draft at low tide, let me know. When we did the boat survey, none of our vessels on the canals needed more than four feet clear draft at low tide, but if you bought a recent, one recently and we need to do so, please let me know. The sandblasting that's occurring, Councilmember Luskin is correct, that wasn't something the council approved. I took that action within my, uh, legislative and budgetary authority, um, to clear all of our curbs and gutters. They kinda looked like new.
They look new.
They look like new. And we did so because we thought that that would enhance the road and also enhance the aesthetic value of our community and preparing ourselves for the wonderful twenty twenty that we're gonna have. In addition to that, I know that we're delayed. Unfortunately, the company that we picked for the pickleball court, the gentleman's first is mother died and then someone else passed away. But the pickleball court should be coming on board before the end, before Valentine's Day holiday. So pickleball court is all in the way. As I mentioned earlier, the mayor and I decided, or excuse me, the mayor and I agreed earlier this year that we will be applying for the All America City Award. That is a community-driven award process. So look out in the newsletter, we're gonna be asking our residents to take the lead in the application. To be considered an All America City is one of the top honors that you can receive and we feel that this is the year that it's right for us to apply. Uh, the flooding, I'll talk about during the, during the item. Also, I'd like to just let the town know that we, as your staff, never stop fighting for you. During the last hurricane, Hurricane Irma, we applied, we submitted some claims that were denied to us. One of them in particular was an eighty-seven thousand dollar claim for your street sweeper. FEMA said no. But because your town manager and your finance director do not take no for an answer, after two rounds with FEMA, they approved our street sweeper claim for eighty-seven thousand dollars. And so we'll be able to replace our street sweeper this year as a result of that. So know that we are constantly fighting for you. Even when the federal government says no, we say we still want it and we go after it. So with that, I just wanna say thank you to Marie Tally for her efforts with this Golden Beach future leadership. Thank you to Maria Camacho for her work with the audit and with FEMA. And thank you to the rest of our staff for all the work they do, including our chief and our clerk, uh, Ms. Perez and Ms. Chief Roberto. With that, I have my report.
Thank you, town manager. Town attorney, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Moving right along to ordinances, second reading?
Mayor, there's an item that you're, uh, that I just need to put into the record. Each year, I'm required to provide the town with an update on the film permits. The report is attached to your agenda.
There you go.
So each year, I'm required by ordinance to provide you with a film permit update. The report is attached to your agenda for your consideration, for your adification.
Got it. Item number K, ordinance is second reading. Day one, an ordinance of town council amending the town code, chapter forty-six, section forty-six point eight-five, height of seawall and docks and extension of decks and docks.
An ordinance of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, amending the town's code of ordinances by amending article four of chapter forty-six entitled Waterways, section forty-six dash eighty-five, height of seawalls and docks and extensions of decks of docks to allow the deck of a dock to be constructed at a minimum seawall height of three point four two five N A V D eighty-eight or at a maximum seawall height of four point four two five N A V D eighty-eight, providing for separability, providing for codification, providing for conflict and providing an effective date.
Any motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second? Okay, this is what we just went over during our local planning agency, been approved by the local planning agency. Uh, if there's any comments from the council?
Mayor, there's no changes from the first reading to second reading and again, this allows you to bring your dock to the same height of your seawall or keep it down low.
And we're not changing the side, the height of the C O O and, and just remind me very quick thing, uh, N, N G, N D G, NGVD. Uh, I know we don't use it anymore, we changed everything, but I believe the seawall was at five feet.
So you're allowed.
Now the dock is gonna be a five feet as well?
Correct. So you're allowed a minimum five, maximum six, the NGVD. And so if you want a terminal dock, you're now allowed to do so. The code prior did not allow that.
Any comments?
And any project that's in the pipeline or any variances that were denied over the last couple of years, we have administratively granted those variances honoring the intent of the council to pass ordinance. So everyone who wants it or has wanted it has been given, I did an administrative order giving them the right to do so. They don't have to come back to us.
Any, uh, public comment? Close, the council, close to the public, roll call, please?
Mayor Singer?
Yes?
Vice Mayor Bernstein? Councilmember Luskin? Yes. Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein? Motion passes.
Moving along to item number L, ordinance, this first reading, there none. Item number N, quadra deuce resolution, there none. Uh, item number N, civic center complex master plan update.
I'll keep it very brief, mayor. So tomorrow morning, starting at ten A M, the, the election committee members will be meeting here in this chambers to interview the five candidate, the five proposals that have submitted plans for our civic center. We will be recording that immediately after all of the, all of the firms have presented. We will be rebroadcasting that, that, um, workshop la- uh, on a continuous loop for the next two weeks. So if you watch channel six.
Six six five.
Six six five, you'll be able to watch the question and interaction between the council member, the selection committee members and the panel. The selection committee member will be taking the list of five proposals down to three for the council's consideration on Tuesday, February eighteenth, starting at ten A M. In two hour intervals, the top three firms or the top three rec- the three recommended firms, there's, forget the word top, the three recommended firms will meet with the council for a two hour session per firm where we will deliberate the consideration of the proposals. If the selection committee decides to only recommend two or one, then we'll only meet with the two or one. We're gonna allow the selection committee to drive the selection process of the facility. The council then on the eighteenth will have its workshop, meet with the, with the prospective, um, respondents, engage with them. And then the night of the eighteenth, at your council meeting, that night at six P M, again, February eighteenth at six P M, we will be making the selection. And what's gonna happen then is the, the council is gonna authorize the mayor, the town attorney and myself to sit down and negotiate a contract, a construction schedule and a critical path moving forward with that firm. That will then come back to the council for ratification at the March meeting and that's when we'll really get, start getting pen to paper as it relates to the civic center complex master plan. I'm pleased to announce that we had five respondents, the lowest coming in at bud- at five point two million and the highest coming in at over seven million dollars, seven point seven million dollars. As you know, we have a budget that was allocated for this project and we think that we have at least one or two projects, firms that we can move forward with. They were all reputable and very good firms. Each of the firms that presented their proposals were very thorough in their submissions and I will tell you this. You should be extremely proud of the residents that you selected to be on your selection committee. All of them have been in my ear asking very tough and critical questions. I know that tomorrow, the firms will be put to task and I wanna thank them in advance for the hard work that they've done thus far. With that, that's our civic center master plan update.
Thank you, just thinking about the process. We are basically alerting whatever, whatever company we need to get, whichever firm, that the fact that we're choosing them. And now we're having to negotiate with them and everything's in the public, everything does not hurt your negotiation and negotiating ability on this.
So with a, with a design build project, so we've already agreed, like their price is their price, right? So what we will be negotiating is terms, things that we can eliminate to try to get to our budget price, cause there's only one firm that came in at budget, the rest of them are over budget. We need to decide whether we're gonna increase our budget or if we can. So in terms of negotiating chips or things that we can use leverage for is very little, because with a design build project, you get your design, you get your floor plans and you get your price. And so there's very little to negotiate after that. Um, some things that we can change are if we don't like the layout of the floor, if we don't like the facade of the building and we wanna change the materials. Uh, those are the type of things and Steve, guide me if I'm wrong, but in terms of what authority in government, I'm not sure about the private sector. But in government, what authorities do we have in terms of a design build with a guaranteed maximum price contract, um, that we have is very different than what the, the other commu- the building committee has. Uh, there's other distinguishable differences and that's why when we sit down to negotiate that final contract and that guaranteed final price with the guaranteed deliverables, um, those are the elements that you're gonna be looking for, for, for ratification.
Mike, did I miss?
That's correct.
I mean, I think that's.
That's correct.
I see Mr. Hallow Sherry shaking his head.
Can you do, uh, can you elaborate on that?
We did. We did, we.
So why can't you go to your question? You can always negotiate. When it comes to the contract, you're negotiating.
There's only one, let me just be clear. There's only one firm that came in at our budget. So if we're, so we're gonna have to see what kinda concessions need to be made on both sides to get to our budgeted amount for whichever firm the selection committee decides to move forward with. And those are some of the parameters that I'll be giving to the committee tomorrow morning as it relates to their deliberation.
After that, why you, uh, did you have a, did you negotiate a policy, you have a second, uh, uh, can you negotiate a price?
You could, you could always negotiate the price.
You can always go to your second ranked, uh, group.
And it may not be a pri- it may not be a dollar amount, it might be an added amenity to do something. You could, when we go to, when it's given to the town manager, myself and the attorney, we have a, do you certain responsi-
Yes.
Right responsibility to do what's best for the town.
Sorry, if I misled you guys to believe that you couldn't, that's not what I meant, was we clearly need to negotiate to get to a price closer to our budget because there's only one firm that came in at budget, is what I was trying to get. I didn't say it right, I apologize.
You know, a committee member can ask you a question here, you have to all make a consideration that these five hundred deaths submitted are also the five firms that came up with their own design. So is it their problem that they gave it too expensive? And is it our problem that we wanna reap that expense or tell them, design something else or change some stuff in there? Because at the end of the day, I think we can get what we want, what we want. Oh, when these guys are re-intruding to build and, and building the trash maho, maybe that's not what we need exactly. And they need to go back and figure ways to design build for our residents.
We, we believe that the selection committee will make the right choice in terms of the respondents that we have to meet. Remember, there is a design criteria that was put out there and the design, design criteria needs to be met, um, for the budget that we put together. We believe that there's at least, at least three, if not four, that can get there. And so the selection committee just needs to work on getting us a more comprehensive, more competitive list with a more responsible bidder so that we can then at the second stage, get to our closer number with the right.
And remember, you guys are ranking them and one of the ranking parameters is pricing. So if someone's at nine million dollars hypothetically, they're not gonna do too well in pricing. They may do great on design, so then we have to, you know, when you rank them after all the rankings are in, then we review it.
And again, I just wanna say this, I, I know that I sound like a broken record, but I wanna always remind our residents and more importantly, our council, we have a very fixed budget for this project. And so we cannot overcommit or overextend ourselves. Our budget has set, it's a very tight budget. We believe that there's enough respondents that can get us a facility that meet our budget, that we could all be very proud of and that we can expand on in the future. Let's just hope that our committee members, let's not, forget the word hope, I know our committee members will get us there. And like I said earlier, we should already be proud of the work that they've done to get us to where we are today. So tomorrow will be a long day. Watch channel six five.
Six six five.
Six six five tomorrow night on a repetitive loop to see how the discussion goes.
Thanks, guys. Yeah.
Parameters, conflicts, ethics, um, are we allowed to talk to any of the people on the committee?
Yeah, I mean, I don't see why not.
Yes. You're not on E.
But I would wait till after they meet.
I understand that. Like after they meet and we're gonna come to a decision of some sort. If there are some people we wanna reach out to on the committee as to their expertise or their thinking as to why they made a decision or their thoughts.
Yes, individually, you, individually, you can do that.
Are we allowed to do it?
Yes, individually, you can do that.
Outside of the sunshine, uh, without violating the.
Yes.
Yeah, there's no sunshine exclusion between committee members and council members.
Right.
So yes, you can engage them. I would wait till you find out who they rank.
I understand.
And then make those, those, those one-on-one contacts.
And timeline tomorrow, they're meeting all day with the, with the contractors and they're breaking tomorrow as well?
They're meeting, they're meeting for one hour intervals, which each of the respondents with a fifteen minute break and they're not leaving here until they give me their recommendation to the council.
And that meeting is open to the public?
The chief is gonna lock all the doors and chain it.
Don't wanna be there.
It is open to the public and it'll be advertised after the fact on channel six.
Six five.
No, no, the council should not be.
It was advertised today, wasn't it?
It's been, it's been advertised. We've been advertising this workshop for quite some time now.
Okay, moving right along, consent agenda, the following seven items on the consent agenda. Item number O two, official minutes of the October fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, regular town council meeting. O three, official minutes of the November nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, local planning agency hearing. O four, official minutes of the November nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, regular town council meeting. O five, a resolution of town council approving an agreement with Dave Caserta, Government Relationship, Inc.
Sorry.
Item number O six, resolution of town council, approval of payment five thousand dollars to Diabetes Research Institute Foundation Love and Hope Event. Item number O seven, a resolution of town council approving a mutual aid agreement with the town of Medley. And item number O eight, a resolution of town council authorizing estate revolving loan, S R F, a loan request. Those filing, uh, fi- items are on the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, those seven items, uh, passed. Moving right along to item number P, town resolution. P nine, a resolution of town council approving, approving the proposal from Southeastern Engineering Contracts for the Construction of a High-Tide Improvement.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, approving the proposal provided by Southeastern Engineering Contractors, Inc. For the Construction of High-Tide Improvements Within the Town, Providing for Authorization, Providing for Implementation and an Effective Date.
Okay, any motion to approve?
Motion.
Give me a second. Town manager.
Mayor, so in, at your October meeting, we provided to you a flood study that Craig A, that Craig A Smith put together. That flood studies, that flood study recommended thirteen improvements to our stormwater system. We only asked the two companies that have worked on our stormwater system to provide us proposals. Of the two, one of them was for a hundred and sixty-one thousand, the other's for a hundred and thirty-one thousand, which is Southeast Engineering. And we recommend favorable approval of that contract to Southeast Engineering. Craig A Smith will be overseeing the implementation of the thirteen projects.
Okay. Uh, any comments?
Can you just, uh, briefly describe what it is they're gonna be doing?
Sure. So throughout the community and some of our areas, we have seen some tidal flooding and some occasional floodings. A lot of it has to do with either flap gates or duct bills that need to be installed or replaced. So on North Island, we're putting a flap gate, uh, on the other side of the bridge so that the water doesn't come in through the, through the flap gates. At Singer Park, we're putting a, a valve and a gate to alleviate the water that's coming into the outfall pipe on the north side, that's a gravity system. At one ninety-five, Golden Beach Drive, so there, a lot of it is work inside of the catch basin boxes. You won't see roads being ripped up or things being ripped out. It's just improvements to the system that try to make it a, a more sealed system. By the way, this will not solve, just wanna be clear, this will not solve some of the floodings that we're having in, in pump station number one. Remember, I've talked to you, got to you, that pump station number one may need to be retrofitted from being a.
That one?
Yes, from being a deep well injection pump to being a forced main pump because our wells continue to collapse because of the way the ground saturation is causing the wells to collapse. So we'll still see some flooding in the south side of town. We think that some of these improvements will help with that. But our engineers have been engaged to find a long-term solution to that issue. And also, this does not include the one point two million dollar project that we're doing on Southern Island.
Okay, any other council comments?
I think Southeastern is a good choice, one for the price and two, they, uh, they were with us through the C I P project, so they're already familiar.
And mayor and council, just to also inform, let you know, our automated, automated transfer switches project has been completed as part of our stormwater updates and improvement segment. So that is already completed and, um, they're ready to, to service during hurricane season.
Okay. Moving right along, we'll move to, oh, I'm sorry, uh, roll call, please. Any council, any public comments? With that, roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes?
Vice Mayor Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein?
Yes.
With that, we'll move to discussion items. We have several items town manager wants to review. Uh, first one is building regulatory advisory board to be an architectural review board.
Mayor, council, um, the chairman of the board is here, so I'll ask Mr. Hallow to just join us at the podium and, and kinda articulate, um, the methodology and the thoughts behind. Um, the board has made a request that we evaluate whether or not we should convert from a building advisory and regulatory board to a building, sorry, to an architectural review board. Um, and so I, we've invited Mr. Hallow to come in and explain, uh, what the committee's position is on it.
plans, and, uh, the plans meet the zoning codes, and as long as those plans meet the zoning codes, there's really not much we can do. And we find that sometimes there are finishes that are requested for the exteriors of, of the structures, and sometimes the structures themselves that we may not think, uh, would be rise to the level of some of the other construction going on in Golden Beach at this time, and feel that, that if we had the ability to request applicants to make certain changes that we feel are, are more applicable to the town at this time, we'd be better served.
Mayor, and to that effect, and first, let me just say, Mr. Hollow has been serving as the chair of the building advisory board for at least the thirteen years that I've been here, I'm not sure how long before that, so I wanna say first, thank you for the hard work and the long hours that you put in, uh, working for our residents, so thank you for that.
Would you like it?
We, I just whispered it to her ear, we need to do something special for Mr. Hollow.
We gave him gray hair.
That's true.
And, and you're stealing, and you're stealing my thunder. But let me just say this, he's correct. I'm sure you guys have all witnessed, there's a home on Ocean Boulevard that recently used literally floor tile to wrap their house as the facade, and the B R A B had no authority to, to deny that request. Our code doesn't give them that. So Steve and I actually had a meeting earlier today, and we talked about how we could get, make a hybrid board, maybe not go all the way to a full architectural review, because the state statutes that govern that are very strict in terms of the qualifications of the members and, and what they can do. But we agree, the administration agrees, and I think the attorneys can come up with a creative way to give them more teeth and more.
More power.
More authority in saying, no, that doesn't make sense, you're not doing the right thing. And there, there has been quite a few applications where you could tell that they're biting their tongues, it just, it had no authority to say no to something. So we, we agree, the town administration agrees, that the board should give it, be given more authority, to what extent, I think the attorneys need to kinda guide us, because we also don't wanna become too far, in my, in my personal opinion, too far like Coral Gables, where it's everything based on their design standards, and if it doesn't follow from their design standards, you can't get it approved. And so there has to be somewhat of a happy meeting.
So I got a question, Jerry. So if, uh, would that include paint colors?
We, we already have a, a list of approved paint colors and shades, and if you fall inside of there, we don't really do anything at that point. I mean, if someone came and said to us, we wanna do a purple paint, we would say, hey, it doesn't fall within this, with, this approved palette, and, and you need to stay within that approved palette. So, it would, it, it might apply to some, but not all of it.
So it might be like a, uh, like the incident that you had on A one A with the marble on the.
So it wasn't marble, that's the problem.
It was, it was, it was ceramic.
It was a ceramic tile.
It was ceramic floor tile, literally ceramic floor tile that was affixed to a property, and it's now the facade of the property. And actually, I'm not even sure if that's, I mean, wind load, how, if it tears off, you're in a hurricane.
They have to comply with engineering, obviously, but I'm not sure that that's what we wanna see.
Right. So I got a question. So say someone, that individual, the board says you can't do that, does that individual have any rights to challenge the board, or how does that work? Do they go to it?
Well, you would, you, you would, you.
Is that a spin?
You're gonna, you're gonna set it up. In other words, you can do everything from a very rigid architectural review board, which Coral Gables has, for example, and they also have permitted materials, you, you can't have metal roofs, I mean, you know, they have a very rigid, um, process of materials, design, uh, and a board that is all architects that applies that. And every single home that's built, goes, every project that's built goes through, every Tuesday morning or whatever it is, they're all, the architects are all lined up, and they literally tell them, I, that column is just way too wide, it looks weird, or it's too narrow.
Why do you check that too, right?
Uh, no, 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 they don't have an architect.
They have a historic preservation board.
Historic preservation and a planning. So Val Harbor, for example, has a design review board, which is not nearly as rigid as, um, as Coral Gables, but they have input into not just colors and materials, but actual design. And, and, but that board is typi, is made up of mostly non-residents who have the qualifications, design qualifications, to make those kinds of decisions and provide that type of input. So, what we need to.
Are they paid?
They're not paid.
They're just, they're not listed?
Uh-huh, they're volunteers. They're volunteers.
They get their name out, they're architects.
And it's a, it's a well-respected position. I mean, to be appointed to that board is something that, that they, the architects like to have that credential. Um, so, we have to understand from the, uh, building advisory board, the scope of what it is that they feel they would like to regulate. Then, we, yes, we can put in place regulations that would allow for, uh, you know, design review on finishes, design review on materials, uh, and, and it can, it can go all the way to actual design of homes, whether, whether you want, and I'm not telling you to do that.
Does it go to paint? So what extent do you think we need to go? I mean, you're on board on.
I, I think we need to, first of all, I think that if someone has turned down at that, at our committee, it probably should come to you anyway. Uh, you're the elected officials, and quite frankly, if someone's turned down a house, I know, I don't wanna give you more work, but they should probably have the ability to come.
All right, guys.
It would be, it would be an appeal to the.
We're gonna start standing?
No?
Well, no, just be an appeal of our decision.
Right.
Um, but, you know, we're, we, we probably, we normally take decisions that we feel are the best that we're seeing now, so you would have to.
I, I agree with that, but pay, pay, paying, playing the devil's advocate for a minute, what do you say to someone who's building a home and the architectural board? I mean, I'm just throwing out a wild hypothetical, just doesn't like the design that somebody came up with, and it's just our taste versus their taste, and they say, you know, what right do you have to legislate? The size of a caca or a wall?
Well, they could, if they didn't pass, I would, again, I would suggest that.
Come here.
Before you, and then, as the ultimate.
But we also have to, we also have to.
It's a matter of taste, it's a matter of, uh, choice and design.
Yes, yeah, and, and you also have to set up a system now where somebody is not all the way through the process, and then you tell them, oh, you gotta change this, 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 and this. So there is, there, the, the design review process in these cities is fairly early on in the process. It's typically at the site plan elevation, uh, conceptual stage, so that people don't design an entire house and then come in and say, oh my God, we don't wanna glass wall there.
But it has to be a little bit more than that, let me explain to you why, because most of the time, it isn't the design of the home, it's the structure itself. If the structure meets the code, we generally don't have an issue whether they wanna go a modern or some, some other Mediterranean. Um, it's usually the exterior finishes, exterior fen, fenestration. You already have a landscape architect who, who will design that, but that's, we, we, I think, would get more concerned about, uh, how, if, if, if it's visible by the pu, by the public, how, how the house looks in relation to all the other homes that, that are being built here right now, and, and, uh, you know, we wanna make sure that everyone uses, you know, uh, quality materials and, and looks, and, and looks like an upscale home. That's, that's what it comes down to.
So it sounds to me like mostly, we're talking about finishes and ma, exterior finishes and materials.
Right, I agree.
Steve, about, I think, I don't know, whatever it's kind of council, nineteen, nineteen, twenty, you know, you know, a bunch of years ago, anyway.
Twenty-nine, I think that's it.
With, with, um, Coral Gables, was it, it is alive, and I think there was a case law.
Yes.
Coming up.
Yes.
Where people were trying to build in Coral Gables, and they said it was arbitrary appreciation, somebody wanted a color, you probably can tell us about the cases and whatever else. So, it sounds as though you have to take away the subjective.
Yes.
Discretion of the board, and it has to be couched with a lot of objective.
Yes.
Um, rules.
Yes.
As to what they can have, like your palette, you're gonna have to.
That's fine.
You know, you, I, you have that. Now, you're probably gonna say, okay, what else do you need, Jerry? You need, uh, exterior finishes, but in terms of the design, if, if a house is on a hundred-foot lot now, they're allowed to build certain amount upstairs and inside da-da-da.
He's saying that's fine.
But they still can look like a long square, and you look at it, you say, that kinda looks like a factory. But if they didn't come to us for a variance, and when you're looking at it, you're saying, well, that doesn't really look too pleasing. You're, you're absolutely right, we might, you know, there are situations where we see that, and, uh, we might suggest, now, we've tried to, in the code, build in the requirements, uh, to offset. But it didn't happen, it didn't, to some degree it did, and to some degree it didn't. But yes, I mean, I, again, I, when I said the fen, fenestration, I, I said, we don't, I don't wanna see a blank wall sitting on Golden Beach Drive.
We don't?
We do, but we could, but we couldn't, at that point, we couldn't.
It's like a boss lea.
We couldn't say, you, you can't do that, because they complied with the code at the time, you know, or we were, whether they did or didn't, we were advised that they complied with the code. So, we, you're right, that we might, there might be situations where we say, guys, you gotta, you gotta go take a look at this, you gotta, you know, create some more movement on this, create some more fenestration, I, you know, we don't want a blank wall, we don't want just to see a garage door and nothing else, you know. You're a hundred percent. And that's where Steve, and I know that Alex, when we tried to revise code a number of years ago, you know, the original, the original rule was, when I first came to Golden Beach, the way they were addressing a box-like house, they said, well, you're not gonna be, if you have a seventy-five-foot house, you can only build, be capable of building on sixty-five percent of your second floor. Well, you still could build a box-like house, you know, it didn't, it didn't cure the problem, and I don't know if we still have cured the problem, because it's a, it's a difficult thing. We still get people to comply with the code, but design houses that we might not otherwise like. That's Mediterranean versus modern, that's the problem.
Well, it's, it's anything, it could be deco versus modern. It's whatever it is.
All right, guys, keep the meeting moving. So this is a discussion item, so Steve.
It is, it is, what, what I think is important is, what I can do for you, I can send you a semi, and just look at it, and let's have a discussion at the next meeting. If that's within the scope of what you all would think you'd like to engage in, okay? They try, they struggled with the same issue there, but where they didn't really wanna impose upon the homeowner that the exact type of architecture, or the fact that you had to have barrel tile roofs, or, you know, but they wanted to have some input in the process, and that's now been in place for about almost eighteen years, and, without a challenge. So, i- it's worked well. Now, I don't know if you're the same.
Let me just recommend this, well, let's get it first to the B R A B.
I think that's a good idea.
Let's go to the B R A B first.
And see if that's what they're contemplating.
Let them workshop it, let them, since they're the ones who are gonna be tasked with implementing this on our behalf, and we thank them in advance for doing so.
Well, maybe, because if we go that way, you may find that the qualifications may not, you, you may have to supplement that committee or board with.
The architect's out of the board.
With, with architects, so.
Let's do that.
So we're sending it back to make sure, see if they really are.
I, I, I think we need to really have them to get together. I, I, I have a sense of what he's talking about, but I think, let him, let him see an ordinance that does what they're asking for, and I think a little bit more, and let's see whether that's something that they would like to apply.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mr. Hollow.
All right, for all your dedicated, I have a question. Thanks for bringing back the Chris Adams. Can we have something in place for homes that are already built?
No.
No.
Only at remodel, and it depends on the, the level of remodel that you're doing.
Let's go to, uh, bus bays on A one A.
So mayor, council, I'll try to keep it as short as I can, so every year, we get a proceeds from the Hattie penny sales tax that can only be used, and councilman Mendel haven't yet answered yet, but we're working on getting you the answer, that can only be used for transit, transportation-related expenses. Let me say that again. Transit, metro rail, metro mover, mini bus, circulators, um, councilmember Mendel has asked if, if bicycles can be considered transit, and we're looking into it, related expenses. And in town, we currently have four bus bays, and we have been amassing the money that we get every year for the last thirteen years, and we have been able to keep the county at bay from asking for their money back, but this year in our audit, even though we passed the audit, the county commission auditor is saying, spend the money, or we're gonna just forcefully take it back. So what we're recommending, in Golden Beach today, we have a total of eight bus stops, four on the east, four on the west. On the west line, there are two on the north, north of the strand, and two on the south, south of the strand. What we're recommending is that two of the locations on the west side, co-located at this end of the streets, that we add a bus shelter and small, not layable, bus bench, so you don't have to worry about homelessness, but a single-person bus bench type situation along Ocean Boulevard, consistent with the design of our substation, which has the trellises. So on the days, and I'll pass this out to the audience, we either have, well, we're asking, if you flip to page two, Destiny, are there more? Where is Destiny?
I have it.
If you flip to page two. I need one, somebody, okay, if you flip to page two, we believe that adding a, and this is a Golden Beach, this is Golden Beach, um, a bus bay, one on the north, one on the south. By the way, I got this statistics, one hundred and ninety-eight, one hundred and ninety-eight individuals board for, beboard a bus in Golden Beach each and every single day. I know that many of our residents may not be doing so, I know that many of our residents will never do so, but there are over a hundred and ninety-eight people that get on or off a bus in Golden Beach daily to service you, whether they're your all-payers, your housekeepers, your nanny, sometimes your construction workers for all of your construction sites. They board a bus at Hall, Hallover and get off here, so yes, I know your eyebrows all went, wow, that's how many people come to Golden Beach via bus each day, and so what we're recommending is a simple bus bay, not, it's not a bay, so the bus still will stop on the road, and it's just two shelters, one on the north, one on the south, to provide, uh, protection from the elements.
You gotta have a bench then.
There, there is one bench, a, a single-person bench, like a, a small bench. It goes with the same design of our arches that we have at the, at the.
Sure.
And at night, yes, here it is at night, it, it is lit up.
It's very nice.
Okay, some of the cars over here is a seat.
Here it is at night.
For people, for people being drenched in the, in the rain and.
It will not go on any properties, it will go on the street ends, where we currently have a gate, they will each have a camera inside of them, and there are cameras already on, on the inside of the street, so from a security perspective, they're lit, they have small benches, so you cannot lay down, so I know that a lot of our residents were concerned on whether, how inviting this will be to homelessness, um, and other related issues, and I think it was councilmember Percy who made that recommendation to make the benches smaller, um, which I agree with him on that, or was it Mendel, or was it Percy? It was Percy. Um, and so, tonight is, do you like it, 'cause I will have to bring to you a formal proposal, if not, if not. Uh, and then councilmember Mendel has asked that we look to see if we can use the money for bike-related expenses, but if not, we will have to send back the money to the county as it relates to our transit dollars. We will get you the answer before you vote on this for final. I just wanna know, are we going the right direction, or am I spending my.
Right direction. Well, can I, yes, a couple questions?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. In terms of the hundred and ninety thousand dollars that we have.
We don't have $190,000.
Which we have?
$120,000.
Like $120,000.
Oh, $120,000.
Yeah.
Is the county saying, "You sort of lose it all?"
Yes.
"Must you spend it all?"
You cannot use that money, so if we want...
What if you spent $98,000?
We'll have to return the rest.
Oh, okay.
Or we could come up with a maintenance project to maintain our bus benches and try to convince them that creating another, remember, we've been saving this money for 13 years now. So we will negotiate with them to see if, by the way, we don't have enough to cover this cost, by the way. So as it relates, today, our indicative dollars show that we're going to pay some money from our general fund, actually, from our law enforcement trust fund dollars to achieve this project. So we're not going to return money to their...
Okay, I'm not an expert on this stuff, but you were talking about people getting drenched. This is kind of open air.
No, it has the plexiglass on top.
How much do one of these benches cost? How much do these cost?
A lot of money.
They're $53,000.
See, it's like a lot of money.
Because of this design through Landscape Forums, if we wanted something simpler, we could...
How about, I'm just curious.
It's $150 for all of them?
$120 for the full project.
For the full, for a six of them?
By the way, hold on, let me just say this, the council directed us that the last council meeting to also get rid of all the chain link fences at street ends. This eliminates chain link fences that are street ends and puts the aluminum rod on our fence. So I'm giving you a full detail for these two street ends.
Just curious.
How does this alleviate the chain link fences?
Because we're going to do that as part of the project.
Oh.
We're not just going to do things half-tailed, we're going to do things full-tailed.
The ones that you see in sunny aisles?
Not like that.
Are they bad, or are they less expensive? I'm just curious.
Ben, we have to spend the money on the...
I ain't saying that, I'm just, I just would like...
So let me just say this, we, through our consultants, looked for a bus shelter that's consistent with the design of our community. We have trellises in all of our parks, we have trellises at the strand, and this is the only, now, could we find an ironworks company to do something cheaper? Probably, but in terms of what's readily available on the shelf, Landscape Forum is one of the leading manufacturer of modern, all of our furniture at the beach comes from Landscape Forums, all of those new, so they, this is through Landscape Forums, they sell, not the rusted stuff, that's the old stuff, I hear the comments already on the side of the ear. Landscape Forums is a company that does premier outdoor equipment. If you don't want this, we'll keep looking for something else.
Keep it going, answer Councilman Hyman's...
So to the point, is we're trying to do something that fits in with the design of what we already have, to start hodgepodgeing different pieces of furniture, because I consider this a furniture, does not bring the community together. And the mayor and I were just having this discussion this week, we're looking at a way to change all of A1A to tie into what our new building's going to look like. And so, bringing the motif of glass and metals throughout the community on A1A, so that when you drive from the north or drive from the south and drive through, you know that you're in Golden Beach, and we believe that this design goes with that.
Just going where you were going, the bikes suck in some places.
Let me tell you where he was going. Councilmember Mendel wanted us to use the money to get rid of the, no, the decorative, the decorative markers that are on the entrance of town. Right now, we have decorative markers on the north and south side of town, that we have created a bike path on with asphalt, but he's recommending that we ask the transit company to use this money to remove those concrete decorative markings, so that bikers don't have a problem. I do not believe that that mobility will be consistent, but we will make the request and let you know.
And as the mayor was leading to, that leads to the speed, to the traffic calm and the light.
That's what you mean, is that noise?
Exactly. Another thought that I saw...
I'm just not sure how that ties into...
We're running out of time.
A city that I was just in had this system where we'd share bicycles, we'd put credit cards...
So we talked, we thought about doing that in Golden...
We made the park and it, where people could...
So, that's called the first and last mile program. So in Miami, you're seeing the Deco bikes, the City Bike, the Lime scooters, the Urbus, what's it, Uber scooters, the Lyft scooters, that's called the first and last mile approach. We're not eligible for a first and last mile approach, we're too far from a transit system to do the first mile, so that, these dollars could not be used for that in Golden Beach. We do not qualify for the first and last mile program.
I'll just say one quick thing, as far as the bench goes, I've seen a lot of bus stops lately, they're using like a rail that you lean on, it's actually really comfortable, and set of benches to alleviate the homeless, or maybe on the bench. I'll look at the rails.
So we are, so here's, you're not approving design today, you're not, I wanted to bring you something indicative of what we can do, I get the direction that we need to go cheaper, not as fancy.
No, I understand the parameters now. You got to spend money, so...
So we don't have that much money either, but we don't have a whole lot of money either. We want to bring you a budget that we can, we're going to use all ETF funds, transit dollars, I got your direction, next item.
Next item, veterans are more on the Strand Boats.
So here's what we're recommending, as part of our Center Island Pump Station program, since we're already ripping everything out, we would like to add a tall American flag in the middle of the Strand Boat Dock cul-de-sac that is illuminated at night, and a small monument marker to commemorate those men and women who have served in our armed forces throughout the years in the history of Golden Beach, so that we can be like every other community that has a place where we can honor those men and women who have served. We believe that the Strand cul-de-sac is the ideal place. If you agree, we're going to have to bring your rendrees and bring it back to you, but if we're going to do it, it should be a part of the Center Island Pump Station project. So I see foreheads nodding up and down, I see that that means yes, before you, any discussion on that? Before we adjourn, let me just make...
Bring the, like, flag and the reminders.
Okay, before we adjourn, let me just make three reminders. Reminder number one, this is Super Bowl weekend, I ask all of our residents to be mindful when they're commuting to downtown Miami, Wynwood and the area, also be cognizant that we are having a couple of Super Bowl parties in town, our police have been made aware of, and we'll have extra police on duty to protect our homes and our residents. Our next event is on February Valentine's Day, February 14th, or that'll leave, this year's a Friday, Friday the 14th. I don't know exactly where it is, because Michael's not here, but know that we have a beautiful event planned for you at the Beach Pavilion with wine, cheese, and all kinds of great stuff starting at 5:00, so save some money and join us for Love Day. And the last reminder is Friday, February 14th. And our last reminder is to remind our residents and our council that on Tuesday, February 18th, to tonight, the council will be meeting on the Civic Center item, and also, Mrs. Fishburne, I know that you wanted to say something to good and welfare, I'm going to allow you to speak now, because I know that you...
You almost got the gavel, she'll let you speak.
Yeah, you want to?
Say you buy the gavel.
Yeah. That means you're helping. But if you don't...
First of all, I'm going to apologize that I didn't get here at 6:00, because I figured whatever was going on didn't involve me, so I'm here at 7:00. What I'm going to say needs no discussion, I want no comments. I've lived in Golden Beach for 45 years, not all years, some of you know, I live in Glencoe, Illinois, half a year. I lost a dear friend this week, a very dear friend. His name was Joey Patalotti. He helped me at least once a week with something that was wrong with my house. I cannot tell you how much I will miss this man. He was like a little pixie. He wouldn't come when I called and said, "You got to be here today." He'd come at his own time. I'd hear his truck coming into my driveway. It was the noisiest car I ever saw or ever heard. He helped numerous families in Golden Beach. He called us all by our first names. He was respectful to me at all times, and he told me more than once that he promised Dick that he would always take care of me, and he did. So I don't know how I'm going to honor him, but I know there's at least 15 families here in Golden Beach that he helped all the time. He was the smartest handyman I ever knew. I think he could have had a five-bata capa in handling different problems at my house. So I just want you to know that I miss this friend, I will miss him the rest of my life.
Sorry for your loss. With that, make a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.